Orange Town Planning Board Session of January 5th is now in session. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, wait a minute, let me do this before I break it again. This meeting is like, yeah, I got it. Okay. All right. Perfect, I think. Okay, uh, we're gonna do roll call. Uh, Thomas Warren here. Mr. Mandel.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sweeney.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Andrews.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCory.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Denise Lennon, Lenahan.
Lenahan here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dell.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bond.
Here.
Thank you, sir. All right. Uh, we got eight members. So, Mr. Bond, you won't be voting tonight.
No problem.
Please stay, sir. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can you just announce the, or would you like me to announce the three that are postponed?
I'm gonna do that right now.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, um, there are three items that have been postponed. The first one is Rockland Ciderie Site Plan. That has been postponed. The second is 500 North Middletown Road Site Plan. That has been postponed. And the third is 59 Tweed Boulevard Site Plan. That has also been postponed. So if you're here for any of those, they will not be heard tonight. The only one that I have for a future date is the 59 Tweed Boulevard Site Plan. It's supposed to be going on at February 9th. The other two I do not have a date for. So if you're here for any of those three items, they will not be heard. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the first item is Altice Resubdivision Site Plan PB 22-01. Is there anybody here for that?
I am present.
Okay.
George Galaxis, hey, no chairman.
Yeah, go ahead. Um, you want to?
We're just here. Yeah, we're here to file for an extension. We have, uh, addressed all the comments. And have resubmitted for a checklist and just asking the board to please extend, uh, two ninety day extensions for us in order to file the map.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'll go through the project, the consultant reports. Project review has no additional comments. Uh, Office of Buildings Zone and Planning, Jane Slaven, uh, January 7th. She has two comments. The Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, town of Orange Town, January 7th. Bruce Peters, he has six comments. Okay, Mr. Mandel, questions or comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Sweeney.
No comments at this time.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Andrews.
No comments.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCory.
No, this is a common thing, but as long as the applicant knows those six points from Bruce Peters, they'll have to be addressed. Other than that, I have no comments.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Bond. Okay, thank you, sir. I, I read your lip on that one. Ms. Lenahan.
No comment.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dell.
No comments, sir.
Okay, um, I need a reaffirm of CEQA.
Motion to reaffirm CEQA, Mr. Mandel.
Mandel makes the motion to reaffirm CEQA. Um, do I have a second?
Andrew's seconds.
Mr. Andrew's second. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? None? Okay, thank you. Uh, motion of to, uh, excuse me, a motion to allow two ninety day extensions for?
Motion for two ninety day extensions, Mr. Mandel.
Mr. Mandel, do I have a second?
Andrew's seconds.
Mr. Andrew's seconds. Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. You got your extension, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everybody.
Okay. Next item is uh, Hauser Site Plan and Tree Remediation Plan PB 21-60. Is there anybody here for that, for Hauser Site Plan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Joe Hauser.
Oh, yes, sir.
This is Baracko, African engineer. And I think, uh, Wayne's on here too, Wayne Gavoli.
Okay, um, who wants to, uh, you know, open presentation, who wants to, uh, start it? Explain your project. Who wants to do that?
Wayne, you want to lead into the conversation or do you want me to? I don't know if Wayne's hearing me, but, uh, basically, this is a plot plan, uh, that's turned into a site plan. Uh, there's an addition to add to the building. There's some, uh, extension of the driveway, circular, uh, area for turnaround. And, um, we're attempting to keep this less than an acre in disturbance. The, uh, site plans have been revised a couple of times now. And we're here before the board to proceed to the next step.
Okay, thank you. I'll read in the consultant's reports. Project review has no additional comments. Office of Buildings Zone and Planning, Jane Slaven, January 12th. She has seven comments, but I'd like to read number three in. A revised SEAF per my November 8th, 2020 memo has been received. Per the Rockland County Drainage Agency Memo, December 15th, 2021, number eight. The applicant must submit an environmental impact statement in accordance with Chapter 846 Rockland County Stream Control Act or alternately provide a full environmental assessment form. Uh, does the applicant have any question on that as to what they're gonna do yet?
Mr. Chairman, I believe I submitted that to the county on December 29th.
Okay, well, that, well, the last, okay, well, let me go through and see if the comment there, because I know this is dated from Jane Slaven as of January 12th.
Uh, Mr. Warren, yeah, Joe, the, you submitted a revised short environmental assessment form. Which I, that's the beginning of my comment that that was received. However, the Rockland County is requesting something in addition.
Uh, Jane, when did that request come in?
It's in their letter. The recent December 15th, I believe, is the letter.
Yes, it is.
Okay, I thought that was, uh, I responded to that accordingly.
Okay, we did not see that. So I, I have to, I bring the comments to the board's attention. If you did it, so be it. We did not receive a copy of a full environmental assessment form, only the short.
Okay, is the full environmental required?
They are requiring it.
That's the county.
That is correct.
The County Drainage Agency or the County Planning?
County Drainage Agency. My, if you read my comment, it references the memo.
Okay. Because we, we responded back to them asking for, uh, just submitting the short form. Not, not the full environmental.
Okay, they have not sent anything to us, Joe. So the comments from the other agencies, it's standard practice that the applicant will need to comply or have them change their requirements. So it goes on the record that that is what they're requesting.
Okay.
Okay.
You and I will coordinate with the Drainage Agency. This project, the, the closest disturbances this project has, and there's very little drains, it actually drains in that direction from where they're disturbing any land. Uh, it's over a hundred, it's around a hundred feet to the, uh, bank of the stream from the closest point of where we have limited disturbance. So I'm sure that the things can be worked out with them.
Okay, thank you. Let me, let me continue. Okay, Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, town of Orange Town, January 7th. Bruce Peters has ten items. Bureau of Fire Prevention, town of Orange Town, dated January 3rd. They have one. Booker Engineering, January 12th. Drainage Review Recommendations. The applicant has provided sufficient information to demonstrate that potential significant adverse impacts with respect to drainage can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the Hauser Site Plan be approved for drainage subject to the above comments, of which there are seven. We have Rockland County uh, Health. It's a letter dated November 12th, 2021. I have the short environment, environmental assessment form, which is dated December 29th, 2021. I also have uh, Office of Buildings Zone and Planning, Jane Slaven, November 8th, 2021. And she has a total of eight comments. I have the Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, town of Orange Town, November 5th, 2021. Bruce Peters has twenty comments.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think those two letters, the last two that you've referenced, uh, those were superseded with the latest letters.
No, I understand it. I understand it, but at the last meeting, uh, the meeting was postponed and those were at that time in force. So I just want to put them into the record as we were receiving them and you're obligated to, to deal with them. If you have, then there's no problem, but I just want to, they just have to be put into.
Okay, excellent. All right, thanks.
The Bureau of Fire Prevention, October 28th, 2021, they have one comment. Booker Engineering, November 9th, 2021. Um, again, at that time, the applicant has provided significant information to demonstrate that potential significant adverse impacts with respect to drainage can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the Hauser Site Plan be approved for drainage, subject to the above comments, of which there are eleven. Okay, I also have a letter from Rockland County Planning dated October 29th, 2021. Of which they have fifteen point three comments. I have a letter from Rockland County Drainage Agency dated December 15th, 2021. Okay, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, but I think, um, okay, it's, uh, dated, just like I said, December 15th, 2000. Of which there are, um, eleven comments, and I think, uh, this is what Ms. Slaven was, uh, referring to. I have a letter from Rockland County Health, October 14th, 2021, and they have two comments. There's another letter from Rockland County Drainage Agency, October 21st. And it's just a letter. It says, please note that a Stream Control Act permit from the Rockland County Drainage Agency is required for the above referenced proposal. I have another letter from Rockland County Drainage Agency, December 15th. It's the same one as before. It was eleven comments. Uh, Rockland County uh, Sewer District Number One, October 18th, 2021. They have two comments. I have a letter from Joseph Hauser dated December 29th, 2021. Which has the short EAF enclosed. I have a letter from Alfred Gaddy, based on the ONR maps, uh, dated September 13th, 2021. Based on the ONR maps, there is an existing service at 200-202 Kings Highway. Orange Rockland's new business department must be contacted for all disconnects and installation. All code 753 rules must be followed. I have a letter from Charles Yaski dated November 1st, 2021. Uh, just, uh, he has five comments and there's a total of one, two, three, four, five, six people who have signed this letter. They also have a letter from dated November 10th, 2021, from the, um, Orange Town ZBA consenting town of Orange Town Planning Board Service Lead Agent. That letter was dated September 15th. Rockland County Highway Department acknowledging Orange, uh, Planning Board Lead Agent. It's dated September 21st, 2021. Letter from Rockland County Health dated 10/14/21. Uh, Orange Town Planning Board Service Lead Agent. I have a letter dated, um, November 14th, 2021, Rockland County Health. No, see, comments are attached. Uh, later, letter dated September 1, 2021, for the, uh, Rockland County Highway. This project is outside of our jurisdiction and has no further comments. I have a letter dated September 15th, 2021, from Orange Town ZBA. No comments at this time. And I have a letter from Timberline Tree and Landscaping. Does not have a date on it. And I have a short EAF. Okay. Have dated July 7th, 2021. Oh. Okay, Office of Buildings Zone and Planning, Jane Slaven, July 6th, 2021. This is for the Hauser Tree Remediation, Remediation, Remediation Plan. Um, she has four comments. Bureau of Fire Prevention, July 1st, 2021. They have one comment. Rockland County Planning, June 14th, 2021. They have one comment. They have, I have Rockland County Drainage, Drainage Agency, June 30th. Just a narrative. Rockland County Sewer District Number One dated June 28th, 2021. They have two comments. And I'll put them in anyway. Um, Rockland County Highway Department, saying, Orange Town Planning Board and Service Lead Agent. This is dated uh, July 17th, 2021. I have Orange Town ZBA saying, uh, Orange Town Planning Board and Service Lead Agency. Um, June, June 2nd, I'm sorry, 21. Uh, another letter from Rockland County Planning, stating the Planning Board and Service Lead Agent, uh, June 10th, 2021. I have another letter, June 17th, 2021, from Rockland County Highway Department. No comments at this time. I have another letter, June 2nd, 2021, from Orange Town ZBA. No comments at this time. I have July 27th from SUEZ. Saying no further correspondence for the site shall be sent to this agency. Okay, Cheryl, is there anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Mandel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a couple of questions. What's the status of the lot? Was it or wasn't it merged? Uh, according to Rockland County Planning, number 12 and 13, they weren't sure. Uh, was the deeds filed? What's the status of the property at this time?
Is that a question to me, Mr. Mandel?
Yes, it is.
Uh, as, as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's one lot. I recently received my tax bill and my tax bill only has one lot on it.
There's Rockland County Planning here. Let me just look at their comment again.
Mr. Mandel?
Yes.
We looked back through the history and while a subdivision was approved, it was never filed.
Okay, so it's not merged then?
It is not merged during the process, subdivision process. Once it receives preliminary, the, um, assessor's office is advised and because we have to get the lot numbers.
Right.
And it was just never undone way back.
Okay. So, uh, what are we dealing with then? One or two lots?
It, it's one lot.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Slaven, uh, this is, uh, Rick Picola. Um, do you recommend that the, uh, board in its, um, decision state that it is one lot, just so it's clarified? Cause I know in looking at the record, it is kind of ambiguous and unclear. It should, is, doesn't it make sense for the board to make it clear now?
That is correct. So the lot, the board can see it as one lot. Recommend that the lot lines be removed from the drawing when the drawings are revised. And this was a recommendation that actually was made, uh, years back at one point in time, and it just was never followed through with.
Thank you, Ms. Slaven.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we already mentioned the environmental impact statements that must be submitted. Uh, there's now review of the short environmental assessment forms. Uh, showed a couple of problems. Uh, first on page one, number two, which you did correct, uh, you did correct, uh, with, according to permits, you were put in there the R CDA, uh, uh, comment regarding the Stream Control Act permit. However, you still also have to get a permit from Rockland County Center for Environmental Health regarding the decommissioning of the well. Are you aware of that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, now, on page 13B. What is the total area of disturbance? Because the short environmental, uh, impact statement that you submitted on April 29th of 21 said point seven five. Uh, on the August 25th, 21 statement, you said point five. And on December 29th of 21 statement, you said point nine acres of disturbance, which is the correct, uh, area of disturbance?
My apologies on that, Mr. Mandel. The latest one, uh, the zero point nine, and, uh, Steve, please correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong on that one.
Well, uh, we've been asked by the, um, town of Orange Town, uh, Bruce Peters, to include the, uh, existing pre-disturbed area. So we will try, uh, to amend the site plan to make sure it's still less than an acre, because the applicant would not like to go and do, have to do the full groundwater pollution prevention plan for obvious reasons. Uh, it's a lot more time and expense for just a house construction. Doesn't make any sense. So we'll definitely keep it less than an acre. Uh, uh, but in the, to the answer to your question, Mr. Mandel, he probably meant point nine was the latest.
Yes.
But when I add any of the other stuff, it's gonna come close to an acre, but we'll do our best to keep it less than an acre to avoid having to do a SWIP.
Okay, I would so. Okay, number, uh, 16. You indicate that you're located in the 100-year floodplain. Your letter of December 29th states it does not encroach on any New York State DEC wetlands. Could you clarify that, please?
I'll let Steve talk to that.
Yeah, we're not, uh, in any wetlands or, um, there, there may, yeah, there obviously is floodplain wetlands surrounding the, uh, Spark Hill Creek. Uh, but we're not even within, uh, anywhere near it. Like, uh, like I had mentioned earlier in my earlier statement, we're about a hundred feet from any disturbance to the bank of the creek.
Okay, so then I would suggest you correct number 16 to say no then, that you're not located in the 100-year floodplain.
The floodplain is on the site. It's a large site, but, uh, yes, again, we're nowhere near it.
Okay, all right. Now, at the project review meeting, I know, uh, Department of Environmental Management and Engineering asked for a soil erosion plan. That should have been submitted.
Yes, it's been submitted.
Uh, to Bruce Peters?
Yep.
Okay.
And I see, see the, uh, Jane Slaven on that.
Yes, Mr. Mandel, that is one of my comments. It was received and is currently under review.
Okay, I wasn't sure which one it was, uh, as I know at the meeting, it was stated that it hadn't been yet.
Yes, it was received the next day.
Oh, okay, great. Okay. All righty. And no further questions at this time. I'll wait for any public comments. Thank you for your.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mandel. Mr. Sweeney.
Yes, I'm here. Um, just one thing besides, you know, following up Mr. Mandel's comments. Just, um, going back to, uh, Jane's comment, number one, I can't remember since the last time we had this applicant. What was the story with the, um, 300 trees that were removed without a painting approval?
It, it, Mr. Sweeney, it was thirty, approximately thirty trees?
Sorry, thirty, yeah, thirty trees, you're right.
Three hundred would be a passive undertaking. Um, that is part of this approval process. That, that began this whole process, the fact that the trees were cleared without obtaining the appropriate permits. So part of this process is reviewing that, and that is the reason that Mr. Peters requested an immediate soil and erosion control plan be submitted at PRC, which again has been received. Due to the amount of trees that were taken down, we wanted to make sure that the stream was protected.
Right, I know that later on in the packet, um, the letter from, I think, six different team members signed, they kind of referred to that, how the trees were taken down and it changed, um, their view and a couple of, you know, quality of life things that I'm sure we'll hear about when we get to the public portion. So I guess I'm, I want to ask the applicant to remind me why that was done without approvals? What, what was the, the thinking there?
Joe, I think that's addressed to you.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Sweeney, uh, just to give you a little bit of background on this. Uh, we were negotiating to buy the property back in, uh, latter part of 2020. And during that process, uh, a violation search is done. And that violation search came up with, uh, no comments because this particular property predates any records that the town of Orange Town has on it. However, there was a 24C maintenance violation issued that was given to the seller. And after that point, uh, that was, uh, October 20th or so, uh, 2020. And then from there, the seller was, uh, uh, flummoxed. They didn't know what to do, how to resolve it. So between the lawyers, we accepted that violation and then we were able to close. So, once we closed the property at the end of January, I had, uh, an arborist uh, from Timberline. Uh, his letter is, is submitted for the record. Uh, we walked the property. He looked at the violation and said, okay. You know, here's the price to not only cure the violation, here's the price to include any dead uh, disease dying or dangerous trees. And that's what we proceeded on. And it wasn't until, uh, April of, uh, 2021 did I realize that just because the physical size of this lot, there's a town code that needed to be conformed with. So, uh, uh, after that point, I immediately started going back and forth with Rick Oliver. Uh, Jane jumped in later on after that fact. And I immediately, uh, applied for the permits and started to, uh, conform to that code that I just wasn't aware of.
I thank you for that description. Just one more question for you then. Um, you referred to the existing violation from the previous seller that the buyer assumed. What was the previous violation you were fixing when you took down the trees?
I'm sorry, could, the seller was given the, uh, violation initially.
But what violation was that? What was the violation for?
24C, uh, maintenance code violation, uh, overgrown, uh, growth. Uh, there was a lot of debris on the property. Uh, this, this property was previously abandoned for about 20 plus years. So it was, uh, very overgrown and a lot of debris left from the, uh, last occupant, which they, they rented about 20 years ago. So it was very overgrown and a lot of debris left from the last occupant, which they rented about twenty years ago.
I thank you. I have no further questions this time. I'll wait for the public portion.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Andrews? Again, back to the trees, I was over at the site today. And out in front of the property, there's a lot of trees that have white tape around it. What is the, what is that white? That doesn't mean that those trees are coming down, does it?
Just the opposite, Mr. Andrew. Those those trees would be preserved. Again, I still have to go through with an arborist, we have to. Look at the canopies of those trees, make sure that they're healthy. And joining me this evening is Greg McCurio, he's my landscape architect. And if any questions need to be addressed for him, he can certainly chime in on that. But those trees are to be saved.
Okay, and then towards the back of the property, on your site plan, it looks like. And looking at the property, looked like there was a lot of trees taken down. Back by Spark Hill Creek. What I'm hoping for is as you develop the property, that we get a pretty significant, good landscape. Plan and I'm looking at. Having you put back some of the trees that are missing towards the back of the property in Spark Hill Creek.
Okay, well, we'll certainly take it as the law and the code complies. And again, I have Greg McCurio, he's he's my landscape, certified landscape designer. And everything will be done in concert with him.
All right, I'm sure I'm sure you'll be gone through Akebor too. Thanks, I'll wait for the rest of the public portion. Thank you, sir. Mr. McCurry?
Oh, thank you, Chairman. I don't want to repeat what the other board member said, but I agree with their concerns. You know, especially with the trees kind of stick out because, you know, if you look at the trees that were taken down. It kind of follows the site plan as opposed to randomly diseased and damaged trees. So I got concerns about that, that. You know, they were purposely taken down just to fit this plan. And just to go on the, I think we're at a dead end here tonight anyway, because Rockland County Drainage J C has a pretty strong letter. And the reason for the scrutiny is because of the butts Spark Hill Creek, there's wetlands. I think the applicant just said. Doesn't think there's wetlands. They they'll have to address that with the Drainage J C because comment number six. Pretty much spells out that the project set is partly within the New York State designated wetlands. So then that means a D E C permit. So there's a bunch of permits that still have to come into play for us to, I think, move on this. We don't have the environment, the full environmental form or the environmental impact statement. So I think we'll be seeing this again, but I can't see how we can move forward with this tonight. That's my my comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Bond?
No, I think you just covered everything, so, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lenahan?
The only comment is, is there a plan to remove additional trees? I don't see it on the site plan or would that come later?
Where the new sewer service will be coming up at the. North side of the driveway, there are four trees shown to be removed there. And they're in the direct path of the new sewer line, so those are the four that are shown to be still still to be removed.
Okay, so just just four right now?
Yes.
Okay, that's my only comment for now.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dell?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. A lot of things are unclear about this. I've visited the site. It's a very lovely site. It has an older home. I agree with the events that all the other board members have made. However, no one seems to have mentioned how this site is being proposed to be developed. And I'm seeing a new driveway. I don't know if the existing house is being removed. Or if that's just being augmented. Perhaps I could get some initial clarification on that before I ask other questions.
For at at this particular time, Mr. Dell, the existing, there's two existing dwellings on site. One was constructed seventeen eighty and the other one was nineteen twenty seven. I have two structural engineers taking a look at the structure. And at this point, it's a little bit of a coin toss on whether we can still save, preserve and restore. Where, well, we're leaning towards we can do it. Now, getting those costs together is where I am right now with that, but. It is my sole intention to keep those two existing structures and then just add. Add to them as shown on the current site plan.
Okay, and the new driveway, so that means you're going to get rid of a portion of the existing driveway? Which comes up along the Westerly border, is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, I see this title of this has to do with tree remediation. I don't see any information on how you're proposing to do any remediation whatsoever. Did I miss something on the plan?
There is a developed landscape design that Mr. McCurio has prepared. That plan has been submitted to the town.
Well, I didn't see it in my package, but go ahead.
And I don't know if maybe Jane can pull up that PDF file and put that on the screen.
I'm sorry, I only have the the current site plan. Is it, was that part of this?
No.
No.
I could probably share my screen.
Well, I'm glad you're doing that, but you know, as a board member. I have an obligation, obviously, to give this a good, hard look and to do my due diligence. And when things, I'm looking at it right now, I can try to make some sort of sense out of it. But obviously, I can't make any considered judgment about this at this time. Because a lot of the information is coming late on this and then I will be hearing this. But go ahead, let's take a look at it so we get to see it.
Can you share your screen, Greg?
It's saying I can't. It's saying you cannot start screen share while the other participant is sharing.
Matt, I think you might have to give him permission. It's not allowing me to do it.
You're listening, it's right here.
Dean, you should have the same permission as me, but I can look at it.
Greg, if we're not able to screen share, can you?
Um, hold on a second, I think that maybe it is.
It's at the bottom?
Yeah, no, I see that. Let me see, I'm gonna say share.
Look, there you go.
Okay, not now. Let's see if I can figure this part out. There we go. Is everyone seeing that okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I I kind of keep it brief. I got brought in after Joe had the tree work done and it is a common practice. I was a. A New York certified arborist to remove, as the common practice, any dead or dying trees. When they're going in to do that type of cleanup and maintenance. There are quite a few trees. It is a pretty decent sized lot, so the thirty trees is a is a decent size. And there's much less than the three hundred. That kind of took me off guard there earlier. But the plan before you that I'm sharing the screen for has sixteen proposed shade trees. Twenty one understory trees like dogwoods and red buds and other native plants, and then we have eighty four evergreens. The majority of those go along the south property line there to give the neighbors back property. When I was out at the site, I had met with the neighbors and. We had, what I thought were really pretty good meetings talking about the screening that we were looking to implement. I'm, I am familiar with the Spark Hill Creek, just if I could touch on that briefly and. You know, I think it's probably between like a hundred and fifty to a hundred feet away from the Spark Hill Creek. And there's a significant wooded buffer between the developed part of the property and the Spark Hill Creek. And I think the most important thing is to maintain that natural buffer. Kind of moving forward if someone wants to ask me my opinion on that. I don't know that any trees were removed within that area. All the tree work that I had witnessed was on the front part of the property. So if thirty trees were removed, we're proposing a hundred and twenty one new trees. They're larger than typical landscape trees, as per Joe's request to put in some more mature material. And that's that's the scope of the landscape plan to this point.
Thank you. The driveway, is the whole driveway being replaced or just the area where the curve begins?
The existing driveway is up until that first curvature. And that will be restored with new blacktop per code. And then that blacktop will then continue from south to north around the circle and then to the garage. That will all be new work.
Okay, because I was wondering about the possibility of pulling that driveway off the Westerly property line.
The problem with that is, is if you see all the trees just north of that driveway. Any movement of that driveway in much direction away from the property line. Is going to put you in direct conflict with the root zones of those trees. So from the arborist perspective. You kind of want to put the driveway where the driveway is. Moving the driveway to a different location causes additional disturbance. To the existing vegetation there, so.
Well, I'm talking about maybe five feet, but also too, are all of those trees existing that you're showing on your plan?
The ones with the, the.
To the ones to the east of the driveway, are they all existing?
The ones that don't have the lines going to them. So so these ones with this with this symbol, that's existing, but the ones that have the lines connected them, those are proposed. So really, if you see where we did the planting, we kind of zigzag it between where the existing trees are, so. Because there is still, at this point, there still is a significant amount of plant material in that part of the property. Even though thirty trees.
I understand. See where I'm going with this. Trying to see that the neighbors to the west of you get as much privacy as possible.
This area?
That is correct, the entire length of it.
Yeah, so I have like almost, I kind of broke it down by lot.
Okay, well, hold on one one second, please. I don't want to go into really details at this time. Some of that's Akebor and some of that will be looked at. I'm trying to get an overall feel, so.
Yeah, this is all evergreens. This whole line has about eighty evergreen trees along the entire property line.
We'd have to discuss the sizes and everything else, because I'm just looking at this for the first time. The scale on it, I don't know anything about it. But I think one of the big things the contiguous property owners would be interested in. Is that this house, this site, as you said, has been abandoned for some years. Now you're going to have a beautiful house with potentially a lot of lights and everything else. And I just want to see that everybody ends up with as much. Privacy and as much of a rural Sylvan feeling as possible. So when this comes back, and I'm assuming from what's happening here tonight. That there isn't enough information to move it on, and I wouldn't be comfortable moving on. I'd want to see the architectural plans, or at least a generic idea, a little bit more details as to what's happening. The specifics of the remediation, is there any remediation taking place along the stream? Or is it just in this area?
It's just in the identified silver area.
Okay, it's it's, you know, I understand what's going on here. It's, I live in a house, my wife and I, that's like eighteen fifty. So we understand some of the issues that you're dealing with. And it looks like you're making a great effort to try to preserve that house. As to whether or not you can, you know, a lot of people would question that, but it's obviously your decision, that's something separate. But the big thing I would be concerned with that the other people have mentioned is a lot of the specifics. And where this is going to. So at least this way, assuming you'll be coming back. And assuming this, no one's going to move on this tonight. You'll have a general indication of some of the things you should look for to make your next hearing hopefully a little easier. I would obviously reserve additional comments for when I hear what the, anyone else on the board has to say. And also, obviously, in response for those in attendance. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, thank you very much. I'm going to open it up to the public now. If anybody from the public wishes to speak on this application. I think Jane can can bring you up.
Yes, can.
Have I stopped sharing?
Yes, Greg, thank you. Okay. We, do we have any members, any members of the public that would like to speak?
Yes, hi. Could you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Name, name and address, please?
Yes, hi, I'm Arlene Fister. I'm sitting here with my husband, Gary. We are residents of Old Mill Lane. I reside at six Old Mill Lane. And my property abuts right up against two hundred Kings Highway, the House of Property. Also with me tonight on this call are several other neighbors that also abut two hundred Kings Highway. And all of us have questions about the project at two hundred Kings Highway. And hope to retrieve answers from them either tonight or a follow up. So I think if it's okay with you, I am going to turn it over to our first question, if that's okay. And Bertha Bronfeld, who is a neighbor, is going to speak first.
Okay, ma'am, you need to speak and then we'll address her. Each person gets three minutes. So if you'd like to ask a question, that's, if you're done with your comments, then please state that and then.
Okay, well, I do have a question. I did not see an invitation or or. A record of the Historic Water Review being part of this project. They have done work or stated approvals in the past about other historical properties, so are they going to be included in this project at all?
Yes, they are. There's a requirement for the applicant to go to the historic review board, but this project starts with planning.
Okay, very good. So that's the only question I had. So I'm going to hand it over to my husband, since he's sitting next to me. And I believe he wants to talk about the driveway, the distance that we were just talking about. Gary, do you want to ask your question?
Yeah, I, one of my concerns would be the the. Location of the driveway from the garage coming towards our property, you know, sloping downhill. So at the at the bottom, where it kind of curves. With my property and my neighbor's property, Brian and Ann McCurry. Those are low lying areas. So I I guess I'm concerned about, you know, like water, like in heavy rains runoff. And also, being that I do a lot of gardening, I guess one of my concerns would be. You know, in the winter time, using salt or any other kind of melting agents, would that leach into the soil at that location? So, and I guess another point might be now that. That I've noticed the the other. Architectural rendering with the planting of the trees, it looked like the location of the driveway was in a little different position. So I guess the thing that comes to my mind is the possibility, we spent a lot of time in our backyard, as Joe well knows. Because we waved to each other as he, you know, goes by. So I guess I'm a little bit concerned about the possibility of headlights coming into our back, you know, kitchen and our. Our deck, so I don't know if there's anything that could be addressed with that. So, that's it, I'm just kind of concerned about the, you know, water, the drainage and. The possibility of any kind of contamination with melting agents.
Can I talk to that, Mr. Chairman?
Now, Joe, that they're addressing the board, all the questions will be asked and then they'll be answered, okay? Sir, do you have any more comments or can I go to the next person?
No, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, who would like to speak next? Okay, Bertha, Mrs. Bronfeld, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Bertha Bronfeld. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Bertha Bronfeld, residing at. Twenty four Old Mill Lane, Tapan, New York. twenty-four Old Mill Lane, Tapan, New York. Good evening, members of the planning board. I would like to read a statement on behalf of myself, as well as the following individuals. Gary and Arlene Pfister at six Old Mill Lane, Brian and Anne McCrory at ten Old Mill Lane, Eileen Merka at sixteen Old Mill Lane, Charles Yaskey at twenty Old Mill Lane, Dean Yamisaki at twenty-six Old Mill Lane, and Fran Stoughton at two oh two Kings Highway. We all own property and live next to the subject lot, but for Dean Yamisaki, who owns property and lives one lot away from the applicant lot, we are sure both this board, as well as the applicant and his attorney, are aware that there is a restrictive covenant which covers this property, which has been in place since nineteen forty-seven. The covenant, which runs with the land and to which Mr. Hauser is therefore bound, reads as follows, and I quote, "That the land herein granted and conveyed shall be used for residential purposes only, and that no building or structure of any kind whatsoever shall be erected thereon, except the buildings now erected upon the premises may be restored or replaced with similar buildings," end quote. The restrictive covenant was judicially tested by a predecessor to Mr. Hauser, who sought to have the covenant voided. My neighbors and I aggressively defended the lawsuit, which found its way from the Supreme Court, Rockland County, to the Appellate Division, as well as the Court of Appeals, the highest court in New York State. The covenant was upheld and deemed valid in nineteen ninety-eight, and it is therefore judicially settled. While we do not take a position as to Mr. Hauser's application as it relates to the restrictive covenant, we want it stated for the record that we do not waive our rights to op, to oppose any development or construction on the property that we deem to be in violation of the restrictive covenant. All of these rights are expressly reserved and are not waived. What we request that the planning board do is the following. A, have Mr. Hauser state for the record that he is aware of the restrictive covenant and that it has been judicially tested and settled. B, conditional approval of the site plan on the placement of the above restrictive covenant language on the plans themselves. And C, in the deliberations, in your deliberations, in the context of this application, and with your experience and in zoning and planning matters, consider whether what Mr. Hauser is seeking to do is in violation of the restrictive covenant, of which you as a board have knowledge. Thank you very much.
Is there another member of the public that would like to be heard?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, is that Brian?
This is Brian McCrory.
Okay, Brian, the floor is yours.
I'll be brief, because these items have been covered in quite detail by Robert Dell and Greg McCurial. We.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Ryan McCrory, ten Old Mill Lane, Tapan.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, Robert Dell expanded upon this, as well as Greg McCurial. But I'm representing the same group that, uh, Bertha Bronfeld mentioned, and we are very concerned about the privacy and all the trees being cut down. We're looking for privacy from the two hundred, not number two hundred Hauser residence, as well as privacy from the cars that go by in Old Mill Lane, as well as privacy from the houses on Old Mill, on Kings Highway, such as Fran Stoughton versus the houses on Old Mill Lane, we can now see each other, we've never seen each other. We sent the board video, uh, pictures showing what the landscape looked like before the sale was made, right before the sale was made, and then what the current view looks like from everybody's yard into the Hauser residence. And there's just, it's been demolished, basically, there's no privacy whatsoever. And in the past, on the pictures you looked at, you could not even see the house from the, from the, um, aerial view. So we're very concerned about the privacy around the trees. Uh, secondly, I just want to repeat an issue that has already been brought up, is that the drainage is a concern for us too. So we see you guys are addressing drainage, but I want for the record to be stated that the abutting properties are very concerned about the drainage coming from the the residents, the Hauser residents, and it's concerned now, as well as in the future, because right now, with all the changes done and the elevation of that property, as well as the plowing around the driveway, there's concern about the drainage at this point. So I'm not just concerned about the end result of the drainage, I'm concerned about the drainage from this point until there is a resolution. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this? One more time, anybody else wish to speak on this? Jane, do you see anybody?
So Chairman, I do not see anybody or hear anybody.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to close the public session?
Motion to close public session, Mr. Mandel.
Mr. Mandel, do I have a second?
Andrew's seconds.
Andrew's second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, okay. Um, Mr. Hauser, you can hear the concerns of everybody, that there's a lot of concerns of things that have not been done, um, and we'd like you to do. We can't force you to do it, but I kind of like to ask you if you would ask for a continuation so that you can resolve some of these factors. I think one of the biggest factor that, that I'm concerned with is, uh, are you going to be able to restore the existing property of buildings, or are you going to have to change it? Because I think that would, uh, change a lot of opinion with some of the board members. So I mean, it's, it's, uh, up to you. I don't feel that the board is, is happy with, uh, uh, moving on with this, and I think possibly it might behoove you to, uh, you know, ask for continuation. So that's strictly up to you.
If I can have maybe two or three minutes?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, to answer, uh, our neighbors' concerns, which, uh, we have met with, uh, I completely understand, agree, uh, privacy is a two-way street. Uh, I asked Greg McCurio to, to be here with us tonight to explain this, and I'm very happy he was able to share his landscaping plan with the screen sharing. We, uh, met with Gary and Arlene and, uh, and, and Brian. And just to touch on, uh, Brian and Arlene's concerns, uh, the driveway will be pitched away from the back of your property, so everything will pitch inboard to our property. Uh, therefore, if there's any salt or any, uh, icy melting, it's going to go inboard to our property and not towards yours. Uh, again, uh, we like the privacy as well, and we'll continue to have that, that dialogue moving forward, uh, face-to-face, hopefully. Uh, we want to be good neighbors and want to be received as good neighbors and responsible neighbors as well. Uh, for, uh, Ms. Bronfeld's comments, uh, the answer to A is yes. Uh, B, I don't know if that language can be installed legally on the plans, there is a legal precedent that already exists. I don't know if there's a reason to, uh, echo that on the, on the plans. But again, I'm not the lawyer. And, uh, we're not looking to be in any violation of anything. And again, with, uh, Steve Sparacco has done, uh, an amazing job. And the outside consultant, uh, uh, broker engineering has affirmed his plan not only once, but twice. Uh, in as far as, uh, the existing structure, uh, I'm a lifelong resident here in Tapan, born and raised. Uh, I, my wife and I like the colonial feature, we like the colonial charm, and it's, uh, every intention that we keep that. Uh, the foundation's a little rough, it's going to take a lot of restoration and remediation. Again, I have two structural engineers, look at this. Uh, I said it was a coin toss earlier. It leans a little towards, we are being able to keep it, there will be some sacrifices on modernness that, uh, my wife and I are going to have to accept. But, uh, as, uh, Mr. Dell stated, there is some charm in these, uh, in those old bones. So, um, with those things said, I hope I didn't miss anything too much of, um, the Silk Barrier is already installed per the design that's shown on, uh, Steve Sparacco's plan. So there is no, uh, deliberate chance of anything migrating over to any other, uh, uh, neighbor's property or to the Sparacko Creek proper. Everything is surrounded, uh, ninety-five percent. The only place where the Silk Barrier is not installed is on the north side of the driveway, where the four trees need to be removed for the new sewer connection. Uh, once that's completed, the barrier, uh, will be installed a hundred percent, and anything disturbed will be contained internally to that, uh, already identified area. In as far as the DEC and wetlands and all those things going on, again, Steve Sparacco, uh, spoke to this. We're at least a hundred feet away from the Sparacko Creek and we're twenty-three feet higher in elevation. We are not anywhere near that. And again, everything's expensive to keep on, uh, just adhering to these, uh, requests, uh, you know, it's very expensive. So I'd like the, the board to just appreciate that, uh, I'm not a developer. I'm a private homeowner. My wife and I look to live there, and all these different requests not only take time, but they take money. Uh, in as far as, uh, continuing, if I could quid pro quo and only ask that a preliminary or a prepreliminary approval can be considered, because this allows me to go to HABR, uh, which we already have with our developed house plans. Uh, we've been to HABR for a consultation meeting, and we were well received. So I would just like to not have our, uh, progress, uh, put back, uh, any more than it already has been. Uh, if the board could consider a prepreliminary or preliminary approval, so I can at least go to HABR. And, and concerning that, being that it's in the historic district, I thought to avoid that double jeopardy, um, Akebor wouldn't be a part of this process. So, uh, if somebody can maybe, uh, talk to that just for a minute or so.
Okay, um, I, I understand what you're saying, and, and I, 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 I know you want to move with this, but, um, talking, as you can see, from talking some, quite a few of the board members, um, do have a lot of concerns. I think our biggest concern is, is what with Jane Slavens number three, which, which refers to Rockland County Drainage Agency memos of December fifteenth, number eight. Uh, we kind of don't know what you're going to do with that, uh, either you're going to get the, uh, Rockland County Stream Control Act or provide a full EAF. Uh, you know, I, 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 there, there are a lot of things that are missing here, and I think the quickest way for you uh, to do this, uh, would be with a continuation, because you could get back on the agenda right away, I don't know, maybe the next meeting, I don't know, you know, um, what, you know, what the agenda is, if it's full or not, or anything else. And I think if you can get a lot of these things corrected and, and straightened out and come back possibly the next meeting, I think you might be ahead of the game. I mean, again, strictly up to you, because as you can see, quite a few of the board members are very unhappy with, with, not very unhappy, but have a lot of concerns with, uh, what's been done so far. And, and we, we want to protect you and we want to protect the townsfolk, so, you know, um, again, it's up to you if you want to ask for a continuation or not.
Can, at least we canvass the boarding, uh, again, for a prepreliminary, so I can keep on going to HABR.
Prepreliminary will not allow you to go to HABR. Uh, Joe, I think one of the things you might want to consider, and to address your comment about Akebor, uh, tip, it's a normal referral to Akebor from Planning Board. You can ask for that to be waived by the Planning Board. However, they would want to see a complete landscaping plan, and a few of the members had some concerns about the landscaping plan. So as the chairman noted, if you go back and address some of the comments, perhaps that might save you time in the long run, because then you may be able to eliminate the requirement to go to Akebor. So that might be something you want to consider.
Then can I respectfully request, uh, an Akebor waiver with this? And I would really like to work with the neighbors and Greg collectively.
Right. I can't speak for the board, but they typically would not grant that waiver without a full landscaping plan that they're comfortable with. And so you understand the process. If you, if the board decides to send you the Akebor, it would be for the landscaping, and the Historical Board would be for the structure. So they would not contradict each other.
Right, but the, but the series process of this chain is what is really putting me backwards, you know, I have to do A before B before C, and we've already.
Joe, your biggest hurdle is getting past Planning Board, and part of the reason you were delayed is your initial application was not complete.
All right, well, again, from, uh, your item number three, can you just expand on that again?
There's nothing for me to expand on. When it comes to the county agencies or state agencies, you need to work through the comments with those agencies. So as the chairman expressed, I think the board would feel comfortable if you were to work through those comments and come back to the board with those comments addressed. So if the Rockland County Drainage Agency sees fit to accept the explanation by your engineer as to why these things aren't required, then they would amend their letter accordingly. And then you could present that to the board.
All right, is the, has the planning board, uh, declared itself the lead agency in, in my application?
I believe we have.
I don't, I don't think we've gotten that far.
I, I don't think so.
We haven't gotten that far yet.
And, uh, this is Rick Pacola, the Deputy Town Attorney Advisor. Um, Mr. Chairman, it sounds like probably what needs to be done is just take a straw poll. And obviously, if the board was going to vote and they were not going to approve, then Mr. Hauser would really have no choice but to request a contingent, uh, continuation. Also, let me just comment, I know, uh, the legal issue of, uh, the restrictive covenant has come up. Uh, Mr. Hauser has addressed it, and, uh, Ms. Bronfeld has. Let me just comment on that, a little, a little bit for the board and for the public and for Mr. Hauser. Um, the, the entity that interprets and enforces restrictive covenants in this case would be the Supreme Court, Rockland County Supreme Court. And I've actually looked into it, I pulled up some case law on the matter. And my advice to this board is that the board really should not be getting into interpreting or considering the restrictive covenant. Um, I don't think it would be a good idea to include that language in any decision of this board or to require that to be on the map. Um, as I said, it's the Supreme Court that has authority. Um, and if this board comments on it or gives too much attention to it, Mr. Hauser could use that as a reason to, uh, sue this, uh, this board. Uh, that being said, that doesn't mean that this board can overrule or negate the restrictive covenant, that stays in place. As I said, the neighbors that had, that perhaps will have an issue with that, they can address that in Supreme Court. But, um, my advice to this board is to not get hung up on the restrictive covenant. This board has no authority to interpret it, to decide whether it's, um, in place or not, or what it means. So that's my advice.
Okay, in respect to the restricted covenant, it has never come up in any of the consultants' reports other than the neighbor's letter. So in respect to the consultants' reports, which the board, uh, uses, there is no reference to it, so that would not be, uh, anything, and, and I don't, um, you know, it, it's just not there. And, uh, Mr. Hauser, in respect to, um, uh, us, um, uh, waiving the requirement for Akebor, that can be done if the board decides, that can be done at any time. So I mean, it's not something that has to be done now. It's not, it's not something that will either help you move forward or deny you from moving forward. We're, we're trying to get this done the best way for you and for the neighbors and for the town. And I think if you answer a lot of these questions, concerns. And I think if you answer a lot of these questions, concerns, I think would be behoove you and and everybody else. So I mean, you know, we're going back to that. If you want to pull the board as to what their concerns are, or if they want to move forward on this, or ask for a continuation, I shall. I mean, that's up to you. I know some of the board members, I don't know how many, I didn't keep track of it, were a little concerned. Would you want me to pull the board?
As as long as we're here, Mr. Chairman, if you could, I I appreciate it.
Okay, no, no problem whatsoever. Mr. Mandel, uh, would you like, would you uh want to move on with this project? Or uh ask the applicant for continuation?
Well, I would like to ask for a continuation. I can't make a decision uh and practice my due diligence without seeing a full and complete uh landscape plan. I would suggest that where the driveway comes around and the lights near the garage focus on the neighboring property, that they put some landscape along there to just block the lights. But at this point in time, uh, I can't uh approve any sort of preliminary. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sweeney.
Yeah, I agree. Um, I can't see me voting this forward for two reasons. One would be change number three, which is still undecided of termination from Rockland County's, you know, issue with the um the E A F in the long form. And I also have a problem with not knowing if those buildings are gonna be preserved or not. So I would want to know both of those things before I made my decision to move it further.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Andrews.
Uh, yeah, I feel the same way as um Mr. Mandel and Mr. Sweeney. Being that Tepan is a historic uh town in our township, um, it would be really nice if we could preserve those buildings. And uh, I would like to see a a full landscape plan, whether they go to uh Akabor or not. So that's my feeling.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. McCory.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I I agree with the fellow board members. I think the landscape plan looks good. I think it'll improve the property, but the Rockland County Drainage Agency letter is pretty strong, and that's a big hurdle. You know, you you gotta clear it up with them, and then I'd be ready to move on with this. But at this point, we can't even do secret because we don't have the full environmental form. Uh, so once, once you clear things up with the county, I think I think we'd be good to go and have a nice balance between what you want and the neighbors want. So but tonight, I can't, I can't move on this.
And Mr. McCory, just to address one specific, um, our requirement for the town Planning Board is only a short E A F. So um, you you could technically do secret if you wanted to. There's no, you you know, the county has its own obligation to do its own secret, and they are requiring per their law more than what we're requiring. So it's legitimate for you to say you want to see that as well. But just so there's no problem with the record, we're not requiring ourselves.
Yes, all right. Thank you. Let me clear up. Yes, I I I wouldn't be comfortable doing sequer without the full environmental form as requested by Rockland County.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Bond.
Yeah, I I don't think we have any choice but to continue it. I mean, if the applicant wants to, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Lannan?
I agree with everyone else, what they've said so far. Sorry, continuation.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Dell. Mr. Dell, you there? All right, uh, Mr. Hauser, you can see that the majority of the board uh is not ready to move on with this. So again, uh, we're asking you for, if you would
Can you hear me now, sir?
Yes.
Okay, just briefly, um. The considerations I have with the driveway are still obviously there. If you look at, by the way, just for the applicant's uh application, you look on the first sheet that we have here of the submitted plans, the trees closest to the driveway near King's Highway are shown to be uh uh removed. Now, I'd like, all these plans should be coordinated, so they're saying the same thing. But one thing in particular that would help out with this application is if the applicant would consider having the westerly property line area done in a scale at one inch equals twenty, so we could actually see and have a better idea of what's going on and what the options are there. Other than that, I know the app has been considerable time and effort into this project. I think it could be, you know, a very, very nice addition to the town. But we just have to make sure that everybody, including the applicant, is protected. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Good, Mr. Hauser. It's up to you, sir.
Mr. Warren, uh Chairman Warren, uh, thank you for the straw poll. Again, that kind of vetted out some other things that I that I wrote down. Uh, I respectfully received these comments and uh, if Cheryl can, I don't know if Cheryl has the landscape plan, but if she could circulate at that out to everybody because it has been submitted to the town, hopefully that will uh give the board some time to review that and get our comments down and I do acquiesce to uh being continued and come back uh maybe are you back to two meetings a month now?
Uh, I don't, I'm not sure what we're gonna do, being that this is our first Zoom meeting. Uh, I don't know what the schedule is and and
Cheryl will 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 fill us in on that in a second.
Okay.
But Joe, I just want to, yeah, again, make the recommendation that you might want to look at the landscape plan and consider the comments before we recirculate.
Okay.
That's up to you, but you know, there was significant comments on the landscape plan, so you might want to just review that. And Cheryl will fill you in on the dates.
All right, I will circle back with uh with Greg on that and and just as
I just chiming for a sec. I don't know what comments there are about the landscape plan if it hasn't been submitted or reviewed by anybody other than just the neighbors' comments about the landscape plan. Their concerns, I'm just not sure.
Well, I think Mr. Dell had some concerns about the driveway. I think there was some concerns about where the your driveway turn coming out of the garage where the lights didn't shine onto the neighbor's property. Um, and also, uh, this is all, I I I know I was looking at the at the map and there's uh two dry wells in there, so that it's gonna take care of any uh any water issue on that turn. And I also, I, because I think the neighbors were concerned about that, but um, I I I really think that the neighbors are looking to to maintain their privacy. Uh, as Mr. Hauser, I know you're looking to maintain your privacy. So I think if if um you really go through that and look at it with due diligence, I think you're gonna come up with a nice plan and that the board will be happy with, and and I think everybody's gonna be happy with.
Thank you.
Greg, th- this meeting is available on YouTube if you wanted to go back and
Listen to it again, yep.
Listen to it again, yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Cheryl, can you bring everyone up to speed on the dates?
Yes, um, this sounds like uh the board's gonna require a revised plans. So um, the next available meeting would be March ninth, and the deadline for that would be February seventh. But there is another meeting uh on February ninth. But the deadline for that would be January twenty-first in the morning. And that would only be an internal circulation. It wouldn't go out to the county agencies. If you wanted to go out to the county agencies again, then it would have to be the latter meeting on March ninth, so that I have the thirty days.
Okay. Mr. Dell, you have a question?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, just a point, I know it might be into a legal area, I'm sorry. But the applicant said he acquiesced to our request. I think that's a little bit different than asking for a continuation. It might be a crime point. But sometimes these things seem to develop larger lives than we would like and go on to other venues. I think I would be much more comfortable if the applicant said he requests uh a continuation rather than acquiesce, because that implies we put some sort of pressure on him. Uh, it's his decision.
That's why we're waiting. I'm waiting for him to ask for it, Mr. Dell.
Oh, I thought he said, he said he
No, it was not said. We'll try to figure it out as to what Mr. Hauser wants to do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, in using uh straight, unambiguous language, uh, I would like to be continued to to February ninth.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, so the so the board is clear that that will only be an internal circulation. So Joe, anything you need to work with out with the outside agencies, you will have to do that. Our office will not be circulating it to the outside agencies, because we will not have enough, we will not have enough time. They require us to give them thirty days minimum.
Right, I I I think uh Jane, everything that was on those lists have been addressed, and I highlighted the ones that have not been addressed. So I will uh track those down, get those to the board. And just uh one other comment, the engineering for the site is the driver for the landscaping. In other words, the landscape can't drive the engineering, the engineering drives the landscaping. In other words, the slopes, the drains, the driveways, the drywall locations, they have to come first. And then we'd landscape around that. So would have to move infrastructure essentially if uh we want to do anything uh on a on a larger scale, and then we'd landscape around that. So I just want to uh point that out.
Okay, thank you, sir. So you formally asked for a continuation, so good luck with the project. Thank you very much, sir.
Well, hope to be seeing you again soon.
Okay, very good. Yes, sir. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, and the board.
Next application is uh uh ten fifty Route nine W. It's a PB twenty-two dash oh two. Is there anybody here from that?
Yes, good evening. My name is Joel Vicar. I'm the civil engineer for the applicant.
Yes, sir. You want to explain your project?
Yes, this application is for a proposed single-family residence on an existing previously developed site. Uh, the existing dwelling has been largely removed already. Uh, the site, this site plan's been been previously uh received conditional approval from this board. Um, the the owners retained me to to continue with this. Um, moreover, addressing some of these comments, and I've I've had to make some changes to specifically the finished first floor uh elevation. So we're submitting a new application with a slightly modified plan. Like I said, minor adjustments to the proposed first floor elevation. There's also adjustments to the stormwater management system. Um, revisions to the sewer system, but by providing a proposed septic system have been prepared, which will actually now be revised based on comments we've received to revert that previously conditionally approved sanitary sewer connection. So we'll go back to that based on comments. Then I can go into some of these comments or now, or we can go through them first.
Well, why don't I read them in, and if you have any questions while we're going through them, please uh, you know, let us know, okay? Okay, I'll read the comments. Project review uh has no additional comments. Okay, office abilities on and planning, Jane Slaven, January tenth. She has twelve items. Department Environmental Management and Engineering, town of Orange Town, January seventh. Bruce Peters, he has sixteen items. Uh, the Bureau of Fire Prevention, town of Orange Town, January third, they have one. Booker Engineering, January twelfth. The applicant has provided additional information that demonstrates the stormwater detention system can mitigate potential significant impacts with respect to stormwater runoff. We therefore recommend that the ten fifty Route nine W site plan be approved for drainage subject to the above project comments, of which there are twelve. Rockland County Planning, December thirteenth. They have eleven point two. Uh, Rockland County uh Environmental Health, January seventh, they have uh three comments. Rockland County Sewer District, number one, December fifteenth. They have one comment. Okay, Alfred Caddy from Orange and Rockland, which is a November eighth letter, two thousand twenty-one. Orange and Rockland has an existing stub at ten fifty Route nine W. The proposed work on the street side of the property may be in conflict with the existing stub. Orange and Rockland's new business department must be contacted for all service connections. All code seven fifty-three rules must be followed. I have the short E A F dated November second, two thousand twenty-one. I have a letter from Suez dated January fifth, two thousand twenty-two. No further correspondence for this site should be sent to this agency. I have a letter dated November twelfth from Rockland County Highway Department. No comments at this time. And that's it. Cheryl, anything else?
There is a revised E A F.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. And we have a revised, is it?
That's revised on the first sheet.
I know, I I saw that somewhere and maybe I don't have that one, maybe I need to put it in. No, mine doesn't say revised.
It's revised January seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Mandel. Mike, you're far, you you're off. You're muted.
Mine now, thank you. Okay. Uh, it's a couple of things. The planning board meeting uh back in February twenty-sixth of twenty, conditions five and six. On page six, Department Environmental Management and Engineering comments are the same as January seventh of twenty-two, number one, repeats that the perk test failed the first time around. Why weren't new tests conducted under revised plan under a D E M E observation?
Right, so that's the one I wanted to speak to. Um, so we, the the prior designer i- is no longer on the project. I spoke to the owners about these records. Uh, the owner said that no perk test was actually conducted. Um, uh, I've asked for those records. I I don't believe any actually exist. Uh, I will speak to D E M E, but my intended procedure here is is for my office to perform our own percolation test. Based on the lots in the vicinity, the infiltration systems are feasible and common in this area. If we find a perk test doesn't result in an acceptable rate, we'll incorporate a restricted flow orifice into the stormwater retention detention system. Basically augment what we've already designed, but I'd I'd like the opportunity to do a proper perk test. Um, our company to perform one, and I I don't have any record of any others.
Well, just let me read you from the February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, uh, planning board decision. Page six, number five, drainage calculations provided are under review by D E M E. The cover letter to the drainage calculation states that percolation tests were performed and they failed, therefore. Okay, so somewhere, somebody did the percolation test and they did fail. And I was wondering why they haven't been redone. And there, and you're required to notify D E M E prior to the production of the perk test, otherwise they are acceptable, and they can only be done in the spring and fall.
Agreed, I I'm, we're waiting for the spring to do them. I will contact the E M E prior to that. That's exactly what I intend, um. In the meantime, I've I've, well, what I've done is attempted to assume a conservative perk rate to do these preliminary calcs to get to get through Booker.
Yeah, well, uh, for the D E M E, there can't be that, they have to be actual. Okay, there was an application, has an application been made to the Rockland County Department of Health regarding the decommissioning of the well? Because we asked for that again back on February twenty-sixth of twenty, page nine. Do you know anything about that? And have they started that that process yet?
Yes, I've had preliminary conversations with health department. I've had several conversations with Liz, who is not actually Liz Mello is is more on the septic side of things, but uh I've I've begun that process.
Okay. Now, also, um, the Center for Environmental Health, you, in your plans, you talk about a septic system?
Yes.
And they state no way, no how, it cannot be done. You have to hook up to the sewer line. So, uh, and that's something that we, we're not going to over, uh, we're not going to override them.
That was, that was a request from the owner that we, we attempted to go the sewer route. They told us the, uh, the sewer connection was very costly, um, after, right after conversations, that's that issue is not really going to be entertained, so we'll revert back to the previously conditionally approved sewer connection that was shown.
Okay, so you go back to the sewer connection, you can accept it. Okay. All right, this going, I want to go into the other many conditions, uh, from planning board meeting of February twenty-sixth. Uh, were not addressed, you know, he's coming back again before us and based upon the comments from DEME, Rock County Planning and, and the other groups, uh, I'm very, uh, not in favor of any preliminary at this time, uh, based upon what I see, but that's just my opinion. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mandel. Mr. Sweeney?
Yes, hello. Just, um, really one thing in addition to Mr. Mandel's comments. Um, one thing he didn't comment on, I guess, I think the applicant said this a bit in his opening, but like clarification. Well, most of Jane's comments refer to, um, things that don't match, where plans don't match, old, old plans, comments don't match things in other places. Uh, is that because you've come in later on the project and there's a lot of things being redone? Why are there so many inconsistencies with the plans that were submitted?
That's largely why, yes. I came in basically to attempt to address the conditions that were previously, uh, issued with the, the conditional approval. The specific plans that don't match right now are actually the architecturals largely with what I've made as revisions to the civil engineering design. Um, first floor elevation, the, as a result, the floor plan I had to modify slightly to work out grades. So the architectural elevations and the number of sta- uh, steps, the risers and, and treads don't match up with the grades that I've, I've revised to make some of the retaining walls, the driveway slope, um, and other components work properly. And so that's, that's some of the discrepancies. The architect hasn't yet updated their, their drawings. I wanted to, to get, get back on track here for they, they continued with updating their drawings.
All right, so just, you know, my comment would be, I'd like, I'd really would be more comfortable if I saw plans that were complete and accurate before I made a determination for moving anything further.
Understood.
Okay, thank you, sir.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Andrews?
I, um, I agree with Mr. Mandel, Mr. Sweeney. Um, I noticed on a plan that the, uh, it looks as though the driveway was moved from, um, the north side and the south side. Is that true?
Um, there was, is still a, an existing driveway. It was, uh, uh, when you say moved, are you referring to the prior conditional approval or the prior?
It looks like your prior, uh, it's on your plan, page, um, page three, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
It shows, it looks like it shows the old driveway.
Yes, mm-hmm. The old driveway is still largely existing.
So you moved that?
Correct.
Um, I have nothing else, uh, other than I agree with, uh, both Mr. Sweeney and Mr. Mandel.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Andrews. Mr. McCory?
Uh, thank you, Shannon. Just a couple of quick comments, you know, just appears to me that it's a single-family home with, uh, a plan for single-family home, little effect on the neighbors or the environment. Or it looks like you might inherit a bit of a mess. So once you can, uh, clear these things up and we can get this project going, because this project has been, uh, around for a little bit. So if you can address all the comments and get this going, I'm, I'd be happy with that. So that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vine?
Yeah, I think you're right track, but, you know, he's not there yet for a quarter, so.
Good, thank you, sir. Ms. Linehan?
Nothing additional to add. I agree with everyone's comment so far.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dell?
Yes, thank you, sir. Um, are the walls on the north and south side of the property, are they pre-existing or are you putting them in new?
They're proposed. They're non-existent.
Okay, assuming that your notations are correct, the ones on have a heights of thirteen feet uh, to ten to thirteen feet and the ones on the, uh, southerly side seem to be anywhere between seven and ten feet. And then in addition to that, you're putting a house above it now.
Um, the house is below.
It's correct.
The house, um, the, the elevations are roughly correct. The house is actually below. We've, one of the, one of the changes I've had to make is sink the house by, by a couple of feet, the finished first floor elevation, because the driveway slope would, uh, first off, we moved the driveway so that I could actually zigzag around the site to get up high enough in elevation to get to a dwelling. And, um, and, and we actually lowered the dwelling just slightly. And yes, the walls along the, the side property lines that you're referring to are substantial. Um, and, and they're actually to retain the grade on the side so that we can lower the house um, into the grade to get up to it with a, with a driveway that, that has a conforming slope.
No, I, I understand, but if I were a contiguous neighboring to the north or the south, I would feel that I'd be looking almost like at, at a high fortification. Uh, what I think would help and the least you should do is have some sort of plantings or something to mitigate those two sections of walls. Well, normally I wouldn't call for this, and this is only obviously one person's viewpoint. But I think in this case it's required. I know you have an indication of some sort of swell on the northerly side. But though, but for the amount of water you're carrying, I imagine there are ways to, uh, possibly rip wrap it, put a small embankment on the side, whatever you have to do, a small additional wall. But ten foot to thirteen foot of wall is your view, uh, on one of your property lines in an area where it's essentially, uh, um, how would I say? Essentially rural looking, I think it might be out of context. And I myself would not be content with moving it forward until something was done to mitigate it. There's different ways to do it. It's up to you. You could step the wall and then do some plantings that way or whatever, but I think to have people looking at a twelve-foot-high wall out their side windows and from their back and front yards is, uh, a bit excessive. Fact that you did reduce the house side, I think that's, that's a positive view. But if I were, as I said, in those areas to protect their property values, which would then, uh, will ultimately affect the value of the property on the tax rolls, I think it would be essential that you do something to mitigate those, uh, those two areas. Other than that, I agree with the other comments of the other members. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dell. Okay, I'm gonna open up to the public. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? Jane, do you see anybody?
A motion to close the public, uh, portion?
Okay, I didn't get any comment from Jane if there were anybody or not, but nobody spoke up.
Yeah, I shook my head. No, yeah.
Oh, good, I don't see. You, you, you're not on the screen and I didn't hear you.
Yes, uh, no one has spoken up, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Andrews makes a motion to close the public session. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Mandel.
Mr. Mandel, seconds. All in favor? I, am I opposed? No, no opposition. Okay, um. Sir, I, as you can see, the board has a lot of concerns. There are a lot of things on the maps that don't coincide with everything. Um, uh, I, I kinda, I'm gonna ask you if you would consider.
I gotcha.
Excuse me?
I, I, I understand.
Okay, I'm, I'm asking you if you would consider asking for a continuation to get these things resolved and I think, uh, once they're resolved, I think the board might be, uh, um, a little bit more amiable to move on with it.
Understood. Uh, and just to clear up on the property line walls, the neighbors wouldn't be reading any walls. The neighbors would be on the high side of the walls. The, the property, the, 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 our developed property is the one that would see the walls. They're on the low side.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Point that out, but, um, yes, I, I request a continuation of the next meeting.
Thank you very, uh, I'm, okay, now I don't know about the next meeting, uh.
Sure, the first available.
You're gonna have to straighten that up with Cheryl. I don't know what the timeframe would be, but you're asking for a continuation.
Well, I believe Mr. Dell has a comment.
Excuse me? I didn't hear you.
I, I, I believe Mr. Dell has his hand up.
Okay, I don't see him either, so there's, I can see four people.
Yes, he does. Mr. Chairman, he's waving his hand.
All right.
Go ahead, Bob.
Mr. Dell, go ahead.
Hello? Okay. Uh, I just want to know how the other members feel about the height of those walls. They may agree with me or disagree. I just like their feeling. But I would point out that the applicant's view of the walls is on the top looking down rather than on any sides looking in. Uh, so, um, they may not be directly across from these walls, but they certainly would be a noticeable feature when they're looking out of their properties. So just do any other members concur or disagree? Let me know, because that's pretty strong to have a thirteen-foot wall, you know, within five foot of someone's property line, particularly in an area like this.
Okay, um, I, I think if he, if the applicant comes back and if he addresses that a little bit and he gives us a little bit more information, I think we might have a better, uh, determination as to, you know, as on it.
I, I intend to prepare sections, uh, for views.
Okay, uh, again, I can see four people and, uh, nobody else, so I don't know what's going on with anybody else, but, uh, the applicant has asked for continuation.
There, there does not appear to be any public left in our meeting, sir, so.
Okay, well, see, it's, it's their loss because we're a bunch of nice people, so.
Uh, there is one, let me just see, there's one, Marianne and Jimmy is on, did they want to make a comment?
Yeah, uh, what's the application they're here for?
Okay, now there's no, no comment.
Okay, all right. Okay, next application is one seventeen Tweed Boulevard Site Plan. PB twenty-two dash oh four. Ah, there you are, Mr. Dell.
I've been here.
No, you haven't, because I couldn't see you.
Well, that doesn't mean I wasn't there.
In my respect, you weren't here.
Mr. Chairman, at the upper right-hand corner of your screen, there's something called View.
Upper right-hand called, no, it doesn't say View. I see a blue arrow. And I see a square box, which we usually enlarges. I don't want to touch nothing, because the next time I broke it, Matt had to fix it.
If we're gonna continue this, I'll give you another lesson.
All right, well, this is the last time and then I'm going away. So I won't, when I come back, we're gonna be back into meeting. Okay.
From your lips to God's ears.
Yeah, I know. Okay, is there anybody here from one seventeen Tweed Boulevard?
Yes, sir. Jay Reichert, I'm the president of Reichert Engineering. I'm the engineer on this application.
Very good, sir. Could you explain this, sir?
Yes, um, one seventeen Tweed Boulevard is up there on the top of the ridge. The house was built about nineteen seventy-nine. The current owners put some decks on the back of the house about two, twenty-eleven. Um, for reasons that I will not try to explain, they somehow forgot the permitting process when putting those decks on. Um, I was not involved in that. Uh, the owners are currently in the process of getting ready to sell the house and getting all their paper in order and realized they had to get these decks legalized. So we put in an application for, uh, you know, retroactive building permit and were flagged as needing to come before this body because it's a sensitive environmental area. And also before the zoning appeals because one of the decks hangs out a couple of feet into the side yard. Uh, but of course, we have to deal with them after we get finished with the planning process. And so we're here looking to get legal.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'll read the consultant report. Project review has no additional comments. Office of Buildings Owning and Planning, Jane Slavin, January tenth. She has four items. Okay, Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, town of Orange Town, January seventh, Bruce Peters has one. The Bureau of Fire Prevention, town of Orange Town, January third, has one. Rockland County Planning, December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. They have one point two. Rockland County Sewer District number one, December twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. They have two. I have a letter. Well, this is from, from, um, it's from the architect, um, Rich Got Engineering. It's, and respond to, uh, Ms. Slavin's letter of January tenth. And this letter is from, uh, Rich Gotten Engineering is dated, uh, January twelfth. And it's just an answer to Ms. Slavin's letter. I have a letter from Howard Dean dated December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. And I have a letter from Rich Got Engineering, January seventh. And also a letter from Rich Got Engineering, November eighth. I have a letter from Rockland County Health Department dated December twenty-second, uh, two thousand twenty-one, uh, consenting the Orange Town Planning Board Service Lead Agent. I have another letter from Rockland County Health Department, December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. No comments at this time. I have another letter from Rockland County Highway Department, uh, December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. No further, no comments at this time. I have a letter from Rockland County Highway Department, uh, allowing Orange Town Planning Board Service Lead Agent, and that's dated December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. I have another letter from Rockland County Planning Department dated December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, consenting, uh, Orange Town Planning Board Service Lead Agent. I have another letter from SUEZ dated January fifth, two thousand twenty-two. This is no further correspondence for this site is, to, should be sent to the agency. And I have a revised short EAF dated January seventh, two thousand twenty-two. And that's it. Cheryl, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mandel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, no comments. I just think, uh, you may want to read in the, or response to Mr. Dean's letter. He thinks that the columns supporting the retaining wall are shifting and falling down and, uh, Ryan Goth Engineering just states wooden posts that support the decks are not in dirt, but are founded on concrete center tube footings. These footings provide several inches of separation from the soil. And he finds that they're sufficient to support the loads. This for Mr. Howard's, uh, Mr. Dean's edification. Other than that, I have no questions or comments regarding the project.
Thank, thank you, sir. Mr. Sweeney.
Yes, similarly, no real comments. I'm happy that the applicant is trying to, uh, legalize the decks, and I wish them good luck moving forward.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Andrews.
Uh, same thing at this time, um, no comments right now, unless something comes up in the public portion.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. McCory.
All right, thank you, Chairman. Uh, this just seems like a common thing when you prepare to sell a house. And if it wasn't for the area sits in, this would just be a ZBA issue, I think. So, I, I have no comments with this.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Bond.
No, I have no comments.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lenahan.
No comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Dell.
Yes, I agree with everybody. I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anybody from the public wants to speak on this?
Yes, Mr. Dean.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Howard Dean. I own the property next door, which is one nineteen Tweed Boulevard. And I live in Piermont, New York, which is right a mile or two from the building. The, the land behind which these concrete footings are sitting on is moving. And it, it has moved and it's sunk. And that's a dangerous situation because the retaining walls, which are made of railroad ties, uh, is also moving. And therefore, even though the engineer stated that the, that these, uh, columns are on these concrete bases, but the bases are on the soil and the soil is moving. They filled in the, uh, the gap as the wall moved with dirt. I've watched it happen. And therefore, I think it's unsafe until they get it down so that if the soil continues to move, which it will, that the, uh, deck, uh, will be, have to have some type of support. So, it will hold up when that soil moves.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, I believe that the engineer, or let me ask the engineer, um, the sonotubes, how deep are they in the ground?
We, we did not excavate them, so I, I don't know an exact depth. I presume since there's no sign of them shifting, that they're down the typical three feet or three foot six.
Yeah, I know. Usually when they put them in, they were down a minimum of three feet to get below the frost line.
Exactly. Um, I, I will say that I've been on this site several times, and I've seen no evidence of these wooden walls moving. Granted, I'm not there twenty-four seven, so I haven't seen if someone's been filling in gaps or anything like that. And, but, I mean, that's, that's all I can offer is my observations on those points.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question, uh, Jay, if, if in fact the walls were shifting, wouldn't the deck begin to sink?
If the walls were shifting and if the footings were settling or moving, I would expect to see, yes, either sinking of the decks or, or leaning the columns, sinkholes.
Or, or the deck actually pulling away from the house?
Possibly.
And you have not observed any of that?
I have not.
Uh, have you checked the level of the deck? Is the deck still level?
The, the deck is level to eye and, and to walking on it. I haven't put a level to it. It has the usual, and remember, these things are a decade old.
Correct.
They have the, the usual, you know, m- minor settlements and distortions expected from age. But I haven't seen anything unusual.
Yeah, usually got a one or two percent degrade, just so with rains or snow, whatever, it just, it'll wash off. No, that I understand.
Right, Mr. Chairman, that's the reason for my question, because if there was a structural issue, the deck would begin to pull away from the house.
Deck is not attached to the house. The deck is on a lower level, uh, at the, just slightly above the uh, retaining wall, which is moved and has been filled in. I have pictures of it, uh, the separations before it was filled in.
Jay, can you talk to how, how the deck that Mr. Dean is referencing? How is that laterally supported?
That deck is supported on its uphill side by being attached to the retaining wall. And on its downhill side, if you will, which would be, uh, east, on, uh, wooden posts set in footings founded in the slope.
And you've seen no movement?
I have seen no movements. Now, again, um. You know, Mr. Dean is quite possibly seeing things that I haven't. You know, um, all I can say is I've seen no evidence of movement. I've seen no sinkholes. I've seen no unusual, uh, distortions in the wall. And, you know, I've been under that deck. Again, that's not my, I'm not, I'm not calling, I'm not, I'm not. I don't wanna get into a fight with the neighbor. All I can say is I haven't seen what the gentleman is, is saying he has seen.
Right, so, do you, um, Jay, you understand the process then? So, if the, the planning board agrees to move, to grant you approval tonight, you'd have to go to the zoning board, get that approval, then a building permit is issued.
Yes.
And then inspection is done by one of our building inspectors.
Of course.
I would request that you be present at that inspection.
I would be happy to.
And, and we would then again request a, a certification after the inspection as to the structural integrity of the, the walls and the deck.
Okay.
I can send you pictures of the gaps before they were filled in.
Mr. Dean, you're welcome to send that to, uh, Cheryl Cooper Smith's attention, and it'll be in the record. But again, if there's a structural integrity issue, that can be dealt with at the, um, permitting stage. Right now, it's whether or not the location of the decks and the decks themselves are gonna be approved by the planning board. The structural integrity of them can be addressed during the, the permitting process.
And to be clear, I have no interest in being in the paper. And I certainly have no interest in being in the paper because a project I was involved with fell down a hill. So, I'm, I'm not trying, I'm not busy trying to whitewash something that is an issue here. I generally do not see a structural issue happening at this time.
Okay, and if one is found, is your client aware that the town could require that there be additional?
Of course.
Retrofits done to ensure that it's safe?
Of course, if, if, if there's, you know, yes, the short answer is yes. And absolutely, if, if we discover that there is a structural defect with this deck, I mean, I've already inspected them for that, and I have certified that they are, uh, sufficient. But if I was to find that there was, uh, a credible structural defect, my first recommendation to the, to the owner would be to not go on the deck, and the second one would be to get somebody out there to take it down.
Or retrofit it accordingly.
Or, right, re- remediate it.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, that, that concludes my questions for the applicant.
Thank you very much. Uh, is there anybody else from the public? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion to close the public session?
Motion to close public session, Mr. Mandel.
Mr. Mandel, do I have a second?
I have a question, Tom.
Yes, sir, go ahead. Who is this?
Uh, Mr. Andrews.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, the question is to the client, um, what part of the deck, um, is attached to the wall? And which wall? Is it the wall to the north side of the house?
No, um, there are, there are two decks. One deck is, if you, if it would be helpful, I can show you a photograph. Um, if someone lets me share a screen, but one deck is attached to the back of the house on a typical ledger board. And its outboard edge is supported on wooden posts.
Okay.
At the, at the level of grade, so say at the level of the basement, although there actually isn't a basement, um, is a second deck that is founded on an existing retaining wall that creates a small backyard and extends outward, and it's, and its outboard edge is also supported on posts.
Which, which side of the house is that on?
This is all on the east side of the house, on the riverside.
East side, but to, more to the north, because I, I was out today.
Jay, you should be able to share your screen if that, it's telling me you should be able to, hopefully.
Okay, uh, let me see if I can, let me see if I can make this work. Stand by. Oh, this is Zoom, not WebEx. Okay, so, I'm gonna share a screen too. Bear with me. Um, okay, here we go. Are you seeing this?
No.
Oh, wait, there's one more button I gotta push.
There you go.
How about now?
Yes.
Okay, this is a photograph taken from, uh, the level of the upper deck. Looking northeast, showing the lower deck. Let me, at the risk of making everybody dizzy, this is ground level looking northwest. So, this is the southeast corner of the house. And that is the, that, the deck attached to the house. And that large tree to the right is in the middle of the lower deck. Has this helped at all?
Um, but it, these, um, what about the other side of the house, the north side of the house? Towards the west, the northwest side of the house.
Ah.
Any wall there that's about twenty feet tall?
Yes, that supports the driveway but does not support any of the decks.
Okay, all right, because I'm not sure, but it looks as though that deck may have, I mean, that wall may have moved. I mean, there's quite a few, uh, dead men in that wall. But being that it's, um, uh, six by six railroad tie wall, uh, pressure treated, uh, it looks like it has the right amount of camber and everything. But, um, if you look at it from the top side, it appears as though that may have either moved or the ground behind it towards the driveway has, um, has eroded away. I'm not sure, but that's what I noticed today when I was out there.
Uh, yes.
I was just wondering if any part of the deck, um, or any of the decking was attached to that wall in any way.
No, all of the decking is, none of the decking is attached to that wall. And in fact, the upper deck is, is a full story below the level of the, of the upper grade of that wall.
Okay, all right, but I, I would check that wall anyhow.
Okay, I will have another look at it.
Oh, Mr. Dean is talking about that wall or what he's talking about, but I think he's on the south side of the house.
Correct.
Yeah, so, but that wall, um, it looks pretty sturdy, but it looks like there may have been some movement to that wall. That's, that's my only comments that I have on that. And, uh, as far as the public portion, Tom, I'll second that to close it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Andrews. Okay, uh, all in favor of closing the public session? Okay, any opposed? None of pu, no opposition. Okay, public session closed. There's very little, I think, I'd like to move with this, and I think the board kind of agrees with it. Um, at this point, we should allow the applicant to get to, uh, ZBA, and then they can move with that. And I think the architect, whomever, uh, they're not gonna, uh, go ahead and, and sign off on a plan if they feel that it's, uh, unsafe. That's, that's my opinion. Um, so, I'm gonna ask for a, um, um, a motion for lead agent.
Motion for lead agent, Mr. Mandel.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Andrews seconds.
Mr. Andrews second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, okay, thank you. Uh, a motion for neg deck?
Motion for neg deck, Mr. Mandel.
Mr. Mandel, do I have a second?
Mr. Andrews seconds.
Mr. Andrews second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Uh, a motion for final with conditions?
Bob Dell made, is raising his hand.
Okay, I, again, I don't see him on the screen.
Right.
Well, I don't know, Mr. Dell, if you want me, you have to.
Yeah, unmute yourself.
Something. Mr. Dell.
I make that motion.
Can, I get a question. Can they get final before they go to the ZBA? Don't they have to get a variance for the deck?
We, we bank that part of the condition.
Okay, so either they get a final, either they get a variance, or they don't have a final, basically.
Right, we've done this in the past. We've given them final with the condition that they get, uh, a final from ZBA. If they don't get it, then they, uh, they have to come back.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mandel. I think, uh, we should go with preliminary, and when, after they go to ZBA, come back. In the meantime, they can check, as Mr. Andrews mentioned, about the wall or the structure on the north side of the, uh, of the building.
Oh, right now you have a motion on the floor.
Okay, um, I brought it up for final. If, if nobody wants to do final, um, then we'll go with, uh, preliminary. I mean, so, wh- what's everybody's decision?
Mr. Dell made the motion for final. Mr. Dell made the motion for final.
Okay, okay, so we'll go with this. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Sweeney.
Mr. Sweeney second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, I see Mr. Mandel is one. Anybody else?
Mr. Andrews, Mandell and Andrews oppose.
Okay, because I only see four pit, four people on the screen.
So, I will give you a, a roll call. Mandell and Andrews oppose. Sweeney, Lenahan, Dell, McCory, approve.
Okay, so, we have, it's, it's a majority. Okay, good, so it's final with conditions, and the conditions are, um, Office of Buildings, Zoning and Planning, Jane Slavin, January tenth. She's got four comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, January seventh, one comment. Uh, Bureau of Fire Prevention, Town of Orange Town, January third, one comment. Department of Planning, Rockland County, December twenty-third. They have one point two comments. Rockland County Sewer District, number one, December twentieth, two thousand twenty, has two. And. That's, that's it. Okay, I don't think, Cheryl, was there anything else? I think that was it, wasn't it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, uh, do I have a second?
Oh, sorry.
Do I have a second on the final?
I seconded that before, Mr. Sweeney.
You already did the vote with conditions.
Right. Okay, Mr. Sweeney, seconds of all with conditions. Okay, all, okay, we were there, okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, did you do secret?
Yes, yeah, we did. We did lead agent and, and, uh, we didn't?
Yes, you did.
Oh, you did, okay, if we.
I'm so darn.
I just wanna make sure we don't miss a step.
No, no, I understand, I understand. Uh, okay, sir, you got your final.
Thank you very much.
Jay, Jay, you now have to make application to the zoning board of appeals.
Yes.
And my recommendation is you might wanna go back and, and look at the comments and maybe do another inspection, because the same questions may come up at the ZBA.
Yes, I will. And I believe I've addressed most of the comments, but I'll go back through and make sure that I didn't miss any.
Well, with the structural questions, because they may come up again.
Un- understood, understood.
Yeah, I, Jay, you can see Mr. Dean has a lot of concerns. I think just maybe if you can get with him and walk around and, and see what he's saying, maybe there's something that you've missed or something you can explain to him as to what and why, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I'd really like to get a chance to see these pictures, so, um. If he's gonna submit them, perhaps you could forward them to me. And then, once I can see what we're talking about and be intelligent, then I'd be happy to, to get out there with him.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, good luck.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone on the board. Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone on the board.
All right, uh. Cheryl, do we have anything else? Did she run?
The December eighth decisions.
Okay, um.
I'm sorry, may I be excused?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You don't have to, my, my. Hit the button that says leave.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, do I have a, Mr. Sweeney, go ahead.
Can't hear you.
I think you said you make a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of previous meeting.
Okay, do I have a second? Nobody wants to second it?
Mandell second.
Mandell seconds. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None.
I have to, I have to abstain. I was absent.
Okay, very good. All right.
Also, I was absent, Mr. Andrews.
Oh, you know, you guys were all absent. That's terrible.
So I guess I can vote for them, right?
Are you there, Bruce?
I'm here, yes.
Um, we all realize that this is a very, very sorrowful meeting, not sorrowful, I don't know how to read it. This is Cheryl's last meeting, and it really, in plain English sucks, okay? I know I'm not supposed to say that, but it does. Cheryl, you're gonna be sorely missed. You've been. For me, I've, I've been on this board since nineteen ninety-two. And you've really, I mean, I, I, you kind of took me under your wing because you gave me a lot of insight. Um, I've learned so much from you, and uh, y- y- you're just gonna be missed. I really, I don't want you to go. BS, you know, we'll, we'll, I will talk to Theresa. We'll get you some more money so you come back. But uh, I just wanted to let everybody on the board know my feeling towards her. I mean, this, this is, this is a class act lady and, and, and. Hopefully, her replacement comes up with maybe a half of what she is, so. The next one has a lot, big shoes to fill, and I hope the rest of the board kind of feels the same way.
There's no question, that big shoes to fill, that's, that's for sure.
Yeah, not that she has big feet.
And Cheryl be missed.
Thank you.
Cheryl, you are a class act, and you're gonna be hard to follow, seriously.
I, I've threatened to uh chain her to her chair, but I've been told it's not legal.
Well, you know what? You gotta do with the breadcrumbs, give her little dollar bills and she'll follow you. Do the site, do that, like Hansel and Gretel.
I concur, you'll be sorely missed.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, happy retirement, Cheryl.
And Mr. Chairman? Yes, enjoy it.
Thank you.
Hello? Cheryl, you have.
I'm very happy. Uh, Bob, we can hear, yes, Bob, we can hear you.
If you ever need something, you call me, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have the distinction of remembering when she first came on replacing. I've gotta say, she's been an absolute pleasure to work with, extremely professional, had tremendous background. Um, I'm just glad and honored she was there, but I would like to empower you on behalf of the board. Uh, I'm sure the other board remember, would agree with this. If you could write some sort of formal letter of appreciation. And I'd like to know if we could mention something in the minutes, uh, that this uh. Last meeting be done with gratitude for her years of service.
Okay, um, if I may make a suggestion, cuz I am terrible, terrible, terrible. At writing letters, so if somebody please can do it for the board. And pass it around, and I know we'll all sign it because uh. You know, you're gonna be missed, kid. I can't say anymore. Uh, you're bringing tears to my eyes. I got glasses on, so you can't say. So, Mr. Andrews.
I think we should bring Cheryl out to dinner. Uh, I think that's.
I agree. I, I got no problem with that. I mean, I'll take anybody out for dinner. I got no problem with that, but definitely take Cheryl out.
We can, we can plan that upon your return, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm gonna be gone until the beginning of March, so. I don't know who's gonna be chairman or what's gonna happen, so you guys enjoy yourself, have fun. And um, and that's all, I'm, that's all. I, I can't say anything else. That's it, I'm done.
While we're on, I would like to introduce everybody to Caitlin Betman. She's a, a, well, a clerk now been in the department a year, and Cheryl has taken her under her wing. So she's doing a great job.
Good.
So we're, we're gonna try to keep it moving the best we can.
All right, you know what? We're gonna get it done. This has been a good board. We've gone through two years of hell. We all worked together. We've done what we had to do. We've got it done only because of these two ladies that are in the office. Otherwise, I mean, the board members are nothing. We're, we're really, we're nothing. We're, we pick up a piece of paper, we read it. As to what these ladies give us, so. It's the ladies that deserve the credit, not us. So Cheryl, you deserve all the credit. Uh, Jade, a little bit too, not much, but a little bit.
Now, she's taught me a lot over the last four years too, so.
So it's, it's been, it's been a, a good run.
Great person, great person.
Thirty years.
Wow.
She, she started when she was six.
Yeah, right, yeah, thirty years.
You started right before I came on the board. You were here like a month or so before I came on the board, cuz I've been doing this for ninety, thirty years. I had, I had a break in between for nine eleven, but other than that.
She's been taking you for good.
All right, that's it, I'm, I'm gonna.
All right, good night, everybody. Mr. Chairman, have a nice trip.
All right.
Thank you very much. Everybody be safe.
Did you ever close the meeting? I don't think you ever made a motion to close the meeting.
No.
Motion to close.
Motion to close.
Cheryl make the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, do we have that? I think it was Mr. Mandel, Mr. Andrews, I think, I don't know. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Close, none.
Hi, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, good luck, Cheryl. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Okay, bye bye.
Bye.